All right, we'll call this meeting over.
We're going to shuffle around the agenda just a little bit different this evening. We wind up having the county donation checks to the fire departments that wind up having all their paperwork submitted. And we'll go ahead and do that right now while we're at it. Representatives from the fire departments here step forward and your county commissioner from your district will meet you up here. East 63 Volunteer Fire Department. Huntsville Volunteer Fire Department. Meck County Fire Department. Officer Hudson. We're going to shuffle around the agenda just a little bit different this evening. We wind up having the county's donation checks to the fire departments that wind up having all their paperwork submitted. And we'll go ahead and do that right now while we're at it. Representatives from the fire departments here step forward and your county commissioner from your district will meet you up here. East 63 Volunteer Fire Department. Meck County Fire Department. Volunteer Hudson. South Scott County Volunteer Fire Department. Scott County Rescue Squad. Moving on, General Edler is here with us this evening and he will be speaking with us briefly there on a court security where we had victims for a little safe room there and everything that was constructed. He's going to give us an update on that and I'll allow him to pull it this time.
Thank you, Mayor and Board of Commissioners. I'm Jared Edler and of course have the privilege of serving as a district attorney general. And first of all, let your hearts and minds rest easy. I'm not here to ask for any money, at least not tonight. But what I am here for is to provide an update on the Safe Spaces grant that Scott County applied for and received last year. Since receiving that $10,000 grant from Office of Criminal Justice Programs, we've been able to designate a space inside of our office for crime victims to wait while they're in court waiting to testify. Under Tennessee's Constitution, crime victims have the right to be free from harassment and intimidation. And oftentimes what happens, especially in regards to victims of domestic abuse and child abuse victims, is that defendants and agents of the defendant will stare down and intimidate victims to the point that they do not have the courage to take the stand against their perpetrator. Well, thanks to the good work of the Scott County Commission and the mayor's office, that doesn't happen in Scott County because we have a safe space for those victims to go to wait until it's their turn to take the witness stand and testify. And you have a collage of photographs that I'll pass out to you. That is how the safe space waiting room appears. It literally looks like something off Southern Living. I would put it up against any safe space waiting room in our great state. And I'm here to just to give you an update and say thank you for putting victims first and applying for this grant and it is working as it should. We've already this year used that waiting room approximately 20 times. And those are 20 times that victims have come to court and been much safer and federal law more secure because of your office generosity and I just want to say thank you. Now, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to answer any questions here at the board may have.
Thank you for your time, Gerald. Does any member of the county commission have any questions for General Edler? If not, thank you, County General.
All right, thank you. My mom's cooked supper, so.
That's true.
And Mr. Mayor, if I was to miss, please allow me to know there's two members of your staff, assistant district attorney generals Jay Matt Taylor and David Pollard, they can too attest to the usefulness of this safe space waiting room. I appreciate them being with us tonight and the good work that they did as well.
Thank you all for being here. Next up on the agenda, we have approval of minutes for the February 21st, 2023 meeting. You want us to look over those? Got a motion by David Blue Day to approve the minutes. Do I have a second? Second by Sean Terry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have nomination of notaries and bond approvals. For the notaries, we have Missy D. Chambers, Timothy Stephen Dennis, Melissa Ann Foster, William Robert Kimmick, April Mays, Kayla Phillips, Christopher Pierce, and Travis Stanley. On the bonds, we wind up having Haley Gabbert, Amy Knight, Kristy Simons, Candace Cummins, Sarah Byrd, Shannon Day, and Amanda Foss. Do I have a motion that we accept these notary bond approvals? Motion by David Jeffers, do I have a second? Second by Sheila Buckram. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, you have financial reports. You want to take a few moments to look over those? I have a motion by David Jeffers to accept the financial reports. Do I have a second? Second by Jared Burke. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up on the agenda, school matters. Director Hoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for listening. Want to say that Scott County Schools will be in spring break on April the 30th. Look forward to that time off and I know that sort of seniors, students, administrators all. We get back in two weeks and we'll start our TCAT testing and also our intercourse testing for the schools. In- course runs three weeks. The Jeffersons also, that's right, Ms. Jeffers. So, very busy when we get back from our spring break schedule. One thing I would like to come forward, the governing bodies tonight, is to ask if you guys could consider the funding for us to play room at Huntsville Elementary School. I've been director for 12 years now and we have tried to take it on every project we can to alleviate anything from the taxpayers. We've done a lot through our school system. It's really hard for us getting to the business of building or new construction. We have taken on one project, the bus garage, out at where the old bus garage was. We did do that six years ago. And also, we're doing the gym at Fairview Elementary School that would be S R 3.0 COVID relief funding. And that has had no cost to the taxpayer here in Scott County. So, we are going to come for you guys and we'd like to bid the project. I see what we're saying and bringing this for you guys for help for that project. They need it. It's needed. It's not a want, it's a need. And I wouldn't come for you guys tonight if I didn't think that it was. You guys more than welcome to call if you have questions. You know, we've got some estimates and stuff from that. I know some of the teachers over there have gotten some, people come in and do estimates. We really don't know the cost of the project, who'll bid it and when it comes to it, we suspect. So, guys, that's all I have. Any questions for me?
Anybody have any questions for Director Hoff? We have budget hearings on every day, so definitely bring your data with us and, you know, we'll review.
And that's the plan, but one is kind of get out in front of it, let you guys know. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Director. Next up, Sheriff's Department. Get back from the sheriff's department, which is me. Okay, all right. Road Matters. Is Road Superintendent King here today?
I have something to say on Road Matters. The project, we have a project that's supposed to be going between Baker Highway, on Baker Highway between Normal Road, Normal Road and Winona Road. We'd like to make sure that that don't fall through cracks. We've already invested $100,000 into that project. We see the trees being cut over there. I thought that was, hopefully that's that project.
The project should be let out for bidding this month for the T-DOT.
This month.
Unless the T-DOT decides to hold it up for some reason.
If it gets held up again, I would like to know who in the state would like to take responsibility when we have another accident. Because that is a very dangerous portion of the road in Scott County. And I first mentioned this in September of 2018. And we've been pretty steady on mentioning this. We do not want this to fall through the cracks and we'd like to have it as quickly as possible.
It's not going anywhere.
Well, we're going to start.
Anything else on Road Matters this time? All right. Next up, we have comments for the general public. If anybody has anything to wind up saying to this body, please state your name, what district that you're representing, and there's a clipboard there to sign into as well. Considering the amount of folks that we have here this evening, if you do have something to say to address to the county commission, you know, please keep it under five minutes. So, we do have a large amount of folks here this evening. So, if anybody wants to step up to the podium, now's the time.
Hello, I'm Cheyenne Leonardo. I am a poet and I wrote a poem about the O and W Bridge that I would like to share with you. I put this together.
What district do you represent?
I'm sorry, it's my first time.
No problem.
I am perfect. Sixth district.
Okay, all right, we're good, all right.
I put this together by speaking with a few friends and other members of our community who shared some memories and stories with me. And I wanted to share it with you just as a symbol of what this bridge means to us. It's called O and W. We go to the place where that old Whipple trust cuts across the river. We tire of watching all that we love go to the highest bidder. Where we see our memories, they are counting planks and beams, sizing up and tallying which side gets to keep its beating heart alive. The O and W hanging trains above the floods that rise and ask that we consider our past. What once carried the coal out now holds the love in. That bridge, a stitch, binding together both banks of the river, provides a place of passage, invites us each to cross and then get lost in the dense forest of remembering matters of the heart, our history. Don't you know how many young lovers here professed their love for each other? How many of our men knelt on one knee, cradled by steel forged in 1915, asking beauty for her hand, praying she'd agree? And what about Papa's picture and late night drives and family picnics and searching for signs and making plans and hearts to hearts and coming together and falling apart? Don't you know how many moons we've spent confessing in the dark, seeking and praising and thanking the stars? This is where we get ripe with God and sing our songs for those who've passed on. Don't you know that bridge reminds us no one's ever really gone? And don't you know, well, that's the question. Where did we come from and where are we headed? Between being here and going back, old O and W bridges the gap, defines the map, marking every rocky cliffside we call our own. Let us tell it on the mountaintop. That bridge is home. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Governor's Council, embarrassingly, I don't know my district. Seventh District, 12, Tom 6th District, 38, or Congressional District 6. I know that, so.
What city? We'll go with.
Oneida.
Okay, all right.
So, I'm the founder of Gather Potash Lounge. I'm concerned about the consideration to remove the O and W Bridge. Two primary concerns I have, one is the fact that when I was sitting in my living room in Oregon looking for a home and Zillow told me about Scott County, Tennessee, I'm like, where the heck is that? Never heard of it. And did a lot of research on Scott County and found the Big South Fork was here. I fell in love with the old bridge, I said these people really honor their history. And it was a huge part of why we chose to move here. The other part is the business owner, we have countless people that come to our coffee shops, either as tourists or people that are looking to call this place their home like we did four years ago. Just two days ago, there were three different families from Texas that came in to gather and night up and they had just left the O and W Bridge. I understand how beautiful it was and what a cool historical monument the bridge was. And so, I'm telling you as somebody who sought this area out, thankfully, as a result of, partially of the bridge and the park and the beauty around it, and as hearing folks that do the same thing today, that that bridge is worth more than what some may think it is. I would personally have a hard time at the coffee shop saying, oh, you guys want to have a nice day, go down and drive down the O and W. There's a beautiful concrete bridge down there if you guys go look at. So, I think it'd be a huge disservice to our county and our cities and our residents to do with the bridge. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Going once? Going twice?
Doug Smith, I have, I think, District 4. I spoke with you guys two weeks ago about lifelines on the bridge. And I want to go on top of what Scott said with the fact that, we was down there Sunday, it was yesterday, and there were some people down there from, one was from Canada that we spoke with and one was from out of Placid, Canada, in Somerset. And they were also talking about coming to that area for that reason. So, it is a tourist attraction. Aside from it is a lot of history to do with this town in some right. I don't know why we could, or how we could justify tearing that bridge down to build a new one when, again, there are so many other places in this town that could use the attention. Definitely other bridges far more traveled by citizens and like I mentioned before, the other mean, the school buses that go across. So, if you're not interested in saving the bridge for the tourist attraction and the heritage of it, at least consider trying to use that funding and direct it towards other, more neat places, if you would. Thank you for letting me speak.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Greg Smith, I'm actually not, I guess if I did live here, I'd be down in the second district, but I just want to come up and thank you all for the responses professionalism you all have responding to the public that's been reaching out to you. That's why I want to tell you all that, just thank you for that. And I feel we were a pretty good place last week, but thank you again for being professional and visiting the people.
Anyone else?
I like that, that's a quick one.
Okay, hold on.
I'm sorry. Sharon Leonardo, sixth district. I just want to mention, being a disabled person, how easy accessible the bridge would be to somebody in a wheelchair where they could drive up and be able to be let out there and be wheeled up and sit in a chair and still have a view of the scenery where something, a concrete bridge would probably take away the view that somebody would have in a sitting position. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm Sam Defford. The only thing I want to know, in the last county commission meeting, did you all slake for the destruction of O and W Bridge?
They wind up requesting funding.
What?
They request the federal funding for the.
Yeah, but was there any mention of the O and W Bridge being destroyed?
It would have been a replacement.
Well, if you give a road superintendent, you know, which you all did, the fund, the permission to go seek funds from the federal grants and stuff for the bridge and stuff, does that give him a leeway to, trying to think what I wanted to say, does that give him a leeway to, does he have to bring that back before the county court?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I remember, so thank you.
Yes, sir. What was your name, yes, sir? I'm sorry.
Donnie Keen.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? All right, moving on to the agenda. Next would be committee reports and resolutions. First up on the agenda would be Parks and Recreation Committee.
The Parks and Recreation Committee met on March 6, 2023. Members present, David Jeffers, Carline Terry, Tom Payne, Taylor Buckland Stevens, David Blue Day, Debbie Thompson. Members absent, Jennifer Cross. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM by Chairman David Jeffers. No action was taken. Motion by Tom Payne, second by Taylor Buckland Stevens to adjourn the meeting, voting aye, all present.
Heard the reading of the Parks and Recreation Committee. Do I have a motion to accept?
Not yet.
Motion by Ms. Gray, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Stevens. Any further discussion? All those in favor, except for the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have Mercy Services Committee.
Mercy Services Committee met on March 6, 2023. Sean DeGray, Robyn McRae, Sean Terry, Taylor Buckland Stevens, Amy Jeffers, Coby Byrd, and David Blue Day. Meeting called to order at 6:00 PM by Chairman Sean DeGray. There was no action taken. Motion by David Blue Day and second by Sean Terry to adjourn.
Heard the reading of the minutes, do I have a motion to accept?
Not yet.
Motion by David Blue Day, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David Jeffers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, Building and Grounds Committee.
The Building and Grounds Committee met on March 6, 2023. Members present, David Jeffers, Sean DeGray, Jared Burke, Taylor Buckland Stevens, Joyce Keaton, Sheila Buckland, and David Blue Day. The meeting was called to order at 6:05 PM by Chairman David Jeffers. No action was taken. Motion by Sean DeGray, second by Taylor Buckland Stevens to adjourn the meeting, voting aye, all present.
Heard the reading of the minutes, do I have a motion to accept?
Not yet.
Do I have a motion by Ms. Gray, do I have a second?
Second.
Second on Ms. Keaton. Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, Community Development.
Community Development Committee met on March 6, 2023. Members present, Robyn McRae, Sean Terry, Amy Jeffers, Coby Byrd, Jared Burke, Joyce Keaton, and Kelly Posey Chipwood. Meeting was called to order at 6:00 PM by Chairwoman Robyn McRae. No action was taken. Motion by Sean Terry, second by Coby Byrd to adjourn, voting aye, all present.
Heard the reading of the minutes, do I have a motion to accept?
Not yet.
Motion by Ms. Gray, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David Jeffers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will say one thing on community development. I was advised today by Director Byrd with the ambulance service. We will be getting in a, the ambulance that has taken two years on backwater finally arrived, it should be there within the next two to three weeks. So, better late than never. Next up, Intergovernmental Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Intergovernmental Committee, called to order on March 6, 333, 5:04 PM by Chairman Kenny Chaddwell. Members Fred, Kenny Chaddwell, David Jeffers, Coby Byrd, Sheila Buckland, Sean Terry, David Blue Day, Kelly Posey Chipwood. First action, the motion by David Blue Day, second by Coby Byrd to take over the O and W discussion from March 23, voting aye, all present. Second action, the motion by David Blue Day, second by Kelly Posey Chipwood. Before the former of Kenny Chaddwell, Ron DeLaxton, Sabrina Terry, to the Scott County Agricultural Committee, voting aye, all present. Third action, the motion by David Blue Day, second by Coby Byrd. Before the reform of Roger Bridges, Ted Carson, Larry Lay, Kenny Chaddwell, and the Scott County Mercy Communication Board, voting aye, all present. Fourth action, the motion by David Jeffers, second by Sean Terry. Sheriff's Department to reapply for the OJCP Scott Grant, voting aye, all present. Next, the motion by David Jeffers, second by Kelly Posey Chipwood, to allow the Scott County Justice Center to apply for a OJCP Scott Grant. Next, we have a motion by David Blue Day, second by Sean Terry, to allow the Circuit Court Court to apply for a Scott Grant. Then we had a motion by David Blue Day, second by David Jeffers, to approve the 2022 CDEG grant for 420,000. Next, voting aye, all present. Next was the motion by Coby Byrd, second by Sheila Buckland, before the approval of South Scott Longwood Final Point Roadblock on May 13, 2023, voting aye, all present. Next, a motion by Sean Terry, second by Kelly Posey Chipwood, before the approval of the Seventh District Longwood Final Point Roadblock on April 1, 2023, voting aye, all present. Then we have a motion by David Jeffers, second by Sean Terry, before the approval of the four members committee to seek information on placing the O and W Bridge on national registry and store places for the following members, David Jeffers, Kenny Chaddwell, Tom Payne, Jared Burke, and Joel Hewitt, voting aye, all present. Then the last gen of motion, David Blue Day, second by David Jeffers to adjourn the meeting, voting aye, all present.
So, I've heard the reading of the minutes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Coby Byrd, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Chipwood.
Mr. Chairman, on the number, number three, should that not have Tom Payne instead of
Yeah.
Do I ask for that correction?
All right. We have a motion and we have a second. So, with the switch to Kenny Chaddwell to Tom Payne, do I have any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I think that's a, some of the resolutions here, this is the ones for the Ad抚社 Committee points, resolution, whereas, Julia Gerald, the county director, high agent for UTTSU Extension, Scott County has requested an update to the Scott County Ad抚社 Committee, whereas the request is to appoint fourth district commissioner Kenny Chaddwell and former woman representative Ron DeLaxton and former woman representative Sabrina Terry to replace Suzie Armstrong and former representative Todd Pike for a two-year term. Whereas the Intergovernmental Committee has forwarded the request to the fourth commission. Now therefore, it is resolved, and South County Board of County Commissioners hereby approve, the request to appoint fourth district commissioner Kenny Chaddwell and former woman representative Ron DeLaxton and former woman representative Sabrina Terry to replace Suzie Armstrong and former representative Todd Pike for a two-year term.
Heard the reading of the resolution, do I have a motion to accept the resolution?
Not yet.
Motion by Ms. Gray, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Tom Payne. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries.
Next resolution, whereas, based on the Scott County Emergency Communication Board is going to be reappointed, whereas Roger Bridges, Ted Carson, Larry Lay, Kenny Chaddell, as the County Commissioner present, has been recommended, now therefore be resolved, and the Scott County Board of County Commissioners approve the reappointment of Jamie Burke, Doug Keaton, and Scott County, to the Scott County Emergency Communication.
Heard the reading of the resolution, do I have a motion to accept?
Mr. Chairman, please re-correct it also.
Yeah, Kenny Chaddell to Tom Payne. With the correction to Tom Payne, do I have a motion to accept the resolution?
Motion.
Motion by David Jeffers, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Chipwood. Any further discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, next to those, do you want to just look through those and explain?
Yeah, so basically what you wind up having is, is, one second. So on the Sheriff's Department, that was just basically, uh, just for permission to apply for the O J C P Scott Grant. So, as far as that, do I have a motion to allow the Scott County Sheriff's Department-
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by District Chaddell to apply, second by David Blue Day. Is there any discussion on them applying for this grant? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, you wind up having the Boca Grant from the Scott County Family Justice Center. Once again, this is just permission to apply for the grant. Do I have a motion to allow the Scott County Family Justice Center to apply for this grant?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Gray, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David Blue Day. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have the Circuit Court Clerk is applying for a O J C P Scott Grant, number three, six, nine, nine, three. Once again, this is just permission to apply, do I have a motion to allow them to apply?
Motion.
Motion by Sheila Buckland, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tom Payne. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we wind up to have the approval for the Scott County Ambulance Service for them to spend the four hundred and twenty thousand dollar C D V G grant that they wind up receiving. Do I have a motion for them to go ahead and spend it?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Gray, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Keaton. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is a grant from General Sessions Court. This is a yearly grant that they applied for. That one wound up coming in just a few days ago. Should be... Right here. It's the seventy-seven thousand dollar. It's just a grant amendment for General Sessions.
Motion.
Motion by David Jeffers. Second by Sheila Buckland. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving back to Road Block, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Alright. Resolution, whereas there has been a request from the South County Fire Department to hold a road block, and whereas this organization has requested the road block for the following locations and times. Highway fifty-two at the Elgin intersection of Highway twenty-seven, Highway twenty-seven just north of the fire station, and Old Highway twenty-seven at the car wash, New River. Saturday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, from eight A M to four P M. Now therefore, it is resolved, and the Scott County Board of County Commissioners authorize the road blocks locations on Saturday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, from eight A M to four P M.
You've heard the reading of the resolution, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Motion by Sean Terry, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Stevens. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries.
Next, Mr. Chairman, we have, whereas there has been a request from the Seventh District Fire Department to hold a road block, and whereas this organization has requested the road block for the following locations and times. Corbin Road and Edgewood Estates, two hundred block of Gray Hill Road, Saturday, April first, two thousand twenty-three, from eight A M to twelve P M. Now therefore, may it be resolved, and the Scott County Board of County Commissioners authorize the road blocks locations on Saturday, April first, two thousand twenty-three, from eight A M to twelve P M.
Heard the reading of the resolution, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Burke, do I have a second? Second by Tom Payne. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is that all Intergovernmental Committee members, true?
Yeah, I believe that's, uh, it's the right one. We can wind up, we can go ahead and include this one there. I know we was going to put it in under other, but you have the resolution in there, up there with the O N W Bridge.
You're going right now?
Yeah, yeah, let's go into it now.
Alright, final resolution for Intergovernmental. Whereas, Tennessee law authorized county legislative bodies to create subcommittees which are needed to address and make recommendations on specific county issues. And whereas, the Scott County Intergovernmental Committee have proposed the creation of a subcommittee to address county issues with O N W Bridge, including possible national registry designation, consisting of David Jeffers, Kenny Chaddell, Tom Payne, Jared Burke, and Jordan Hewitt. Now therefore, it is resolved, and the Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby approves this proposal to create an O N W Bridge subcommittee with the above named individuals appointed as members.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Gray to accept, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Chipwood. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next up, Budget Committee.
The Budget Committee is called to order March sixth, twenty twenty-three. Five forty-nine P M by Chairman Kenny Chaddell. Members present: Kenny Chaddell, Jared Burke, Robyn McBroom, David Jeffers, Sheila Buckland. First action is a motion by Jared Burke, second by David Jeffers, Superior Budget Amendment Number Nine, Fund One-O-One, Amendment Number Three, Fund One-One-A, Amendment Number Four, Fund One-Three-One, Amendment Number Seven, Fund One-Four-Two, Subfund One-O-One, Eight-Nine-Nine, and Nine-Forty-Three. Amendment Number Two, Fund One-Forty-Two, Subfund Eight-Zero-One. Voting aye, all present. Second was a motion by David Jeffers, second by Jared Burke, to prepare for the county mechanic to receive a monthly benefit of two hundred dollars for the rental of the employee's tools until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Voting aye, Jared Burke, Robyn McBroom, David Jeffers, Sheila Buckland, voting aye, Kenny Chaddell. Final action was a motion by Sheila Buckland, second by David Jeffers to adjourn the meeting. Voting aye, all present.
You've heard the reading of the minutes, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Motion by David Blue Day, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sean Terry. Any further discussion on the minutes? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. First up on the agenda there will be the amendments for, that we have before you.
Mr. Chairman, has any changes to the amendments that have been presented for the work session?
No.
I'm not a motion to approve the amendments.
Motion by Mr. Chaddell to approve the amendments, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David Jeffers. Any further discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up on that agenda is the approval for the county mechanic to receive a monthly benefit of two hundred dollars for the rental of the employee's tools until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. We previously discussed the rental of those tools until we could wind up going into the budget process to see if it would be more worthwhile to wind up allowing this employee, or mechanic, to wind up basically renting his tools there or wind up coming in and purchasing an entire tool kit. This would only be into effect until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. So, with that being said, you know, I'll leave that into your hands as what you feel needs to be done there. Me personally, um, since it's only going to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, I would probably just go ahead and allow that to happen and then come in the budget process, wind up reevaluating on it, wind up, you know, outfitting the, the garage and going from there. But that's up to you all.
Did you hear anything to work with, Doc?
Yeah, he's usually missed up, dropping by that Forest County, all the big things. Of course, there's a tire machine there, uh, tire changing machine, mounts machine, larger stuff, even, you know, unless he was in big business.
You mean making it on two hundred a month?
I think he'd make it on two hundred a month till June thirtieth, yeah.
He'll make a buck, yeah, two hundred a month.
We have a motion by David Blue Day for two hundred dollars a month for the rental of the employee's tools until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Second by Sean Terry. Any further discussion? Voting by roll call.
Colby Burke?
Aye.
Jared Burke?
No.
Buckland?
No.
Chaddell?
No.
Chipwood?
No.
Day?
Aye.
Gray?
No.
Amy Jeffers?
Aye.
David Jeffers?
Aye.
Keaton?
Aye.
McBroom?
Aye.
No.
Stevens?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
Motion carries. Eight, uh, eight aces. Alright. Next up, we wind up going to Finance Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. Finance Committee is called to order March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. At five P M by Chairman Kenny Chaddell. Members present: Kenny Chaddell, Sheila Buckland, Robyn McBroom, Jared Jeffers, Tom Payne, Johnny Hees, Bill Hall. Also present: Jamie Burke, John May, and Donna Reed. First action is a motion by Jared Jeffers, second by Bill Hall. Open bid, voting aye, all present. Next, we have a motion by Jared Jeffers, second by Robyn McBroom, before the mechanical room, we roofed Scott High School bid for, uh, from B and B Roofing, from Tennessee, uh, to the Scott County Board of Education, voting aye, all present. Next, we have a motion by Bill Hall, second by Jared Jeffers, to recommend the Scott County Commission to postpone the approval date with pre-destruction to April tenth, two thousand twenty-three. If pre-destruction registration is completed before April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, Scott County Government will continue with the awarding of the contract to the organization on the ambulance center construction, voting aye, all present. Um, finally, a motion by Bill Hall, and second by Tom Payne, to adjourn the meeting. Voting aye, all present.
You've heard the reading of the minutes, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as a meeting?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Chaddell, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David Jeffers. Any further discussion on the minutes? All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is a resolution.
Thank you, Chairman. Whereas, it's February regular meeting, the Scott County Board of County Commissioners approved the recommendation of the Scott County Finance Committee to award the bid for destruction of new ambulance for sealed pre-destruction. Whereas, this approval was specifically conditioned upon pre-completing all registration requirements on March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas, at this deadline, Preem has not completed its registration with the Federal Assistant for Award Management SAM, which is necessary to utilize our funding for the project. Whereas, Preem has provided documentation by email showing that its application has been received and is being processed. Whereas, it is, at its March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting, the Scott County Finance Committee acted to recommend an extension to Preem until April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, in order to complete its SAM approvals. Now therefore, may it be resolved, and the Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby approves this recommendation.
And what you wind up having here for going here, um, Preem has wound up putting in for their SAM number. It's basically a three-step process. They basically completed, you know, all the process except for final approval from the federal government to get awarded their, their SAM number. Of course, oddly enough, you know, wind up checking to see the folks that came in second place in the bid to see where they're at with their SAM registration, and they had not applied for their SAM registration at all. So, it's kind of like one of those things where basically, you know, in a holding pattern here, hoping that, you know, Preem's SAM number will come in within a matter of, you know, hopefully just another week or two, and then that'll be in and we can move along. Mr. Sanders with Community Partners has been working with them diligently to wind up getting their SAM registration number in so this process can move along, as well as Alan Hill with the architectural firm and everything has been working with them as well. Mr. Sanders, as well as Mr. Hill, their recommendation along with, Finance Committee is, is basically wind up giving them a little bit of extra time there before we have to wind up saying that we may have to wind up rebidding or what may come after April tenth. So, you know, it's one of those things that, you know, I leave that to the legislature, the county commission, but that's just kind of where we're at.
I have a motion to approve the resolution, Mr. King.
Uh, a motion by Mr. Chaddell to approve the resolution, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Chipwood. Any further discussion? Count voting by roll call.
Colby Burke?
Aye.
Jared Burke?
Aye.
Buckland?
Aye.
Chaddell?
Aye.
Chipwood?
Aye.
Day?
No.
Gray?
Aye.
Amy Jeffers?
Aye.
David Jeffers?
Aye.
Keaton?
Aye.
McBroom?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Terry?
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Next up is, uh, other matters. We have a few things here on other matters that showed up here. The one is for the Beer Board Committee. This is, the Beer Board approved a, a permit to, for Jordan Coffee for Southport Trading Company, fourteen eighty-seven West Third Avenue, Onide, Tennessee, three seven eight four one, for the sale for off premises consumption. Basically, what you have here for you is just the approval of the minutes. So do I have a motion to approve the Beer Board minutes?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Chaddell, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sheila Buckland. Any further discussion? Vote by roll call.
Colby Burke?
Aye.
Robert Burke?
Aye.
Buckland?
Aye.
Chaddell?
Aye.
Chipwood?
No.
Day?
No.
Gray?
No.
David Jeffers?
Aye.
Keaton?
No.
McBroom?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Terry?
Motion carries. Next up is a topic which I'm sure everybody's here, you know, intended for, is basically what the wind is doing on the resolution for the Owen W. Bridge for the, for the, basically the approval to apply for funding for the replacement for the Owen W. Bridge. Again, that resolution was, the only thing it was, was just for the ability to apply. This body asked me to read consult with the Director of East Tennessee Operations for T-Doc, spoke with him, and basically the two things that was asked of me to get an answer for was, you know, basically, he reiterated that once again, T-Doc's job is basically come in and to inspect the bridge. Point blank, that's what they do. You know, he basically said, Mary, it is your asset, your county asset, you can do with it as you wish, whether it be for vehicular, pedestrian, or however you so choose. As far as would this body be punished, or would the county be punished if they wind up rescinding that resolution for that, the answer is no. Because the only thing you did was, was request funding, the ability to apply for that funding. So this is basically, the only way that you would get in any kind of trouble is, is if you approved, you know, basically if they got awarded to you, then you accepted that money, you spent some of it, and then all of a sudden you pumped the brakes and decided, well, we don't want to do that anymore. He said then you'd be required to pay that back, which you already spent. So I know Mr. King's not here with us this evening, I think he has something in Nashville. But as far as that goes, in order to rescind that resolution for the Owen W., for that funding, it would basically require a motion, it would require a second, and then require a vote, and by two-thirds majority vote, you know, the resolution could be overturned. So I basically went out and explored everything that the body requested from me to explore. And so as far as what you would want to do for the next course of action, I'll leave to you all to however you want to go.
We're rescinding this, we're going to have a further discussion about what we're going to do with the bridge after, after we rescind our...
Absolutely. All thing would be, would just be rescinding of a resolution. As far as what happens to the property afterward, whether it be vehicular or whether it be pedestrian from that moment on, that would be for, for a further discussion later.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Stevens.
We have a motion by Sean Terry to rescind the resolution.
A second motion.
Have a second by Ms. Butcher. Any further discussion before we vote?
Yeah, I have a question.
Just next.
So if we're rescinding the resolution, is that for all the bridges?
No, ma'am. No. Fortunately, you know, it's, it's kind of like one of those things before, you know, I guess some folks in the state Tennessee, the federal government has some foresight, and I guess they ran into problems before. So where you wind up applying for different resolutions for different bridges, it would just be that particular resolution for the Owen W. Bridge project. The other resolutions for the repair, well, I should say, replacement of the other bridges should wind up funding be done, those would still go forward.
And if we rescind this, it's not on the surface like, from 2 to 5, and then in the future?
No, ma'am. Because what would happen is you could wind up rescinding that, and then you could wind up pursuing that funding for another bridge. I have a motion on the floor still to rescind the motion for the Owen W. Bridge. Do I have a second? All right, second, Ms. Butcher, any further discussion? Sorry. Any further discussion? Vote my roadcall.
Colby Burke?
Aye.
Jared Burke?
Aye.
Butcher?
Aye.
Chadwell?
Aye.
Chitwood?
Aye.
Day?
Aye.
Gray?
Aye.
Amy Jeffers?
Aye.
David Jeffers?
Aye.
Keaton?
Aye.
McBroom?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Terry?
Motion carries. Resolution has been rescinded. Now going forth, there has been a committee forum for the historical registry for the Owen W. Bridge. You know, that process will take a while, that'll take some pursuit, we'll see what happens with that. As far as, you know, the future, whether it will remain open for vehicular traffic or pedestrian traffic only, you know, that'll be determined at a later date because we'll just have to take that one step at a time, you know, because one, we don't know how the rating of the bridge will happen, you know, in the next inspection, you know, so we'll just have to, I'll let up like the process bridge when we get there, right? So, so, but yeah, well, as far as that goes, is there anything to leave on? Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, no. One more thing. All right. Next up is a budget issue that got brought up by Mr. Duvall. Need you up to the plate, buddy. Yeah. He's come for a request for repairs to a fuel pump at the airport.
So is correct, our fuel pump is out, we're not be able, we're not able to pump any fuel at all till we get that fixed. We've got an estimate that's about 90, 99? No. 99, 94, yeah. And there's about three, four week lead time on, so the sooner we can get that fixed, the sooner we start selling fuel again, unless we run out before then, so. How much did you say? 99 what, Jesus? I'm guessing $994, yeah. 99, 94.
Is that for a new pump?
Yes. Yeah, new pump system. Now, it used to be there was three different components, now they make a ball again, so that's why the price is high.
Does the pleasure just need to go forward, or would you like to wait? I mean, that's, that's up to the pleasure of this commission.
So you can't, can't leave any gas right now?
We sell what we got in the truck, and we're getting over that, that be it. We'll have to. So basically, we sell gas or we don't sell gas.
Well, this, this is a, I mean, it's one of those, you have a choice, but you really know either.
Maybe.
Situation.
Right.
Pumping the gas is how we're getting money off of the airport. So, and one of those things will pop up, and which I, it's something you'd rather come through the work session, it's only going to delay it another month.
Exactly.
It's a problem. So you got all the information on finance, Mr. Chairman?
I do. Just need for you guys to approve for a bunch of amendments. What I'll do is go back to the one-on-one here and make any adjustment with your approval and put it in.
Those are the previous ones that we just...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is one I think the folks will have a choice to do, so I'll make the motion to approve that.
Motion by Mr. Chadwell, second by Ms. Gray to approve the, basically the replacement of the airport fuel pump for $9,994. Any further discussion?
Now, that would come out of the mouth, but as I've said before, it's just one of those things, that's all you have, watching, you know. It can pop up and pop out. My correct, Mr. Stevens?
You're on, correct.
Vote my roadcall.
Colby Burke?
Aye.
Jared Burke?
Aye.
Butcher?
Aye.
Chadwell?
Aye.
Chitwood?
Aye.
Day?
Aye.
Gray?
Aye.
Amy Jeffers?
Aye.
David Jeffers?
Aye.
Keaton?
Aye.
McBroom?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Terry?
Motion carries. Next up on the agenda is announcements. I really had anything up as far as announcements go this time, unless somebody asked.
We'd like to say that on the Owen W. Bridge Committee, there have been four commissioners on that committee that would need to be announced prior to the meeting. We want that to be public and everybody to be, to know what's going on in that. We do have some good researchers, that's important in this process, and it's, I think I think this committee is going to be good for that bridge. And so we'll be posting a time and a place for those meetings.
All right. Anybody else for anything to wave an out? All right. Not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Question by Ms. Gray. Do I have a second? Second by Sean Terry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that? All right.